Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order for regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for September 11, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Doug, could you give the invocation, please?
From Colossians, Chapter 1, "He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn over all creation; for by him all things were created, that are in heaven and that are on earth, visible and invisible, whether there be thrones, or dominions, or principalities, or powers; all things were made by him and through him. And he is before all things, and in him all things consist. And he is the head of the body, the church, the firstborn from the dead, that in all things he may have the preeminence." Father in heaven, we thank you for this gathering, for each one appointed here tonight, their service. We dedicate and commit to you for the cause of service for this community. We thank you, Lord, for their dedication and their commitment. Lord, we ask right now that you would just give wisdom, guidance to each one here tonight. Lord, help us to corporately be faithful to the understanding of your sovereignty over all things. And we ask that you would bless and provide communication to all details and all affairs that are before them this evening. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
And let's also remain standing to have a moment of silence for the September 11, 2001 attacks that occurred in our country 16 years ago. So, I'd like to have a moment of silence to pray and to think about what happened on that day, and that we remember the lives that are lost and the people that were affected by those terrorist attacks. Okay, we have approval of the minutes from our meeting on August 28th. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes from the working session or from our regular meeting?
Motion to approve it?
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug. opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have approved of the agenda, and we have one addition, don't we, Madonna, 9/11? Or 9/11, 9L?
Yes, 9L, Fifth Street Sale Memorandum of Understanding.
Yep, does anybody have anything else?
I know we're gonna take off some, correct?
Yeah, what do we take off here?
A, B, and J, correct?
Yeah, if you can, J, J, recording equipment. Yeah, we've discussed all them, so, yep.
Yep, take off 9A, 9B, and 9J. Okay?
Motion to approve of those deletions and additions?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public comment, does anybody here from the public that want to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Nope. No public hearings, reports, nine petitions, requests, and communications. We'll go down to 9C, call for a public hearing for a portion of Sixth Street East vacation?
Yeah, the city council has to call for that public hearing on a vacation, the planning commission cannot, so that is why that came forth.
Okay. Do we have a motion to call for that vacation, for the public hearing to be on September 25th at 6:45?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Yes, so now, what happens after that? Because we had kinda discussed at the last meeting that they'd be ready to go on the 26th, but that's, this is gonna delay that some, is that correct?
They are in no hurry.
I didn't ask that.
Oh, I'm just telling you that they're-
No, I just asked, are we, so what, after the 25th, then what happens? What's our next?
We have the call for the public hearing, I suppose, and then have the public hearing.
So then we can- Public hearing will be on the 25th, right?
Right. That we're calling for now, that's right.
So the 26th, then they should be able to start that, assuming everything's approved.
So is that the last date, then the 25th, and then we vote on it that night?
Right. If there's no public, yeah, would you refer back to the council?
That's, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Isn't there a layover time before that takes effect, though? Is there an argument change?
I can't remember how many days it was.
They'll be ready to go on the 26th.
It has to be recorded. Yeah, it has to be recorded, but other than that, no.
All right, so then the 26th, it'd be good to go.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Anything else? All the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. 9D, consider appointing Noreen Hansen to cemetery board, and we have that in our packet. Do we have a motion to appoint her?
Make that motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We talked about this, next one, considering placing three 15-minute parking signs in front of City Hall, and we discussed that the working meeting, I think we'll do one.
Yep.
So everybody's all right with one. And the next is 9F, consider placing stop signs on Greenwood Avenue at the intersection of Adam Street and Greenwood Avenue, and we also discussed that in our working meeting. And-
Put that on hold for now.
Yeah, Shane's got to check with, with the county about certain things, and then we thought maybe what might help is having a police presence in that area to see if it could slow down some traffic, because apparently the biggest, biggest time for that, for the traffic problems, anyway, with the speeding, is after school. So, we will table that until a future date, but see if we can take some measures in the meantime to reduce the speed. Does anybody have anything else about that? Okay, next is 9G, we have EDA Coordinator Position Advertisement, and we have that in our packet. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that?
Danny, did you wanna have anything to say on that?
No, I, I- Do you want to go? Yeah, I don't care. Dennis Foltz, I'm on the EDA. I'm glad that you're moving forward, forward with this effort now at this meeting. I don't know all the timelines we're gonna run into, but the sooner we can identify a person to take over terror's role, the better off we're gonna be. We have a lot of balls in the air, a lot of good things happening, and I would hope that this can be a kind of a seamless transition, bringing the new person onboard, so that when terror is pretty much out of the picture, the new person, it's a pretty good handle of what's going on. So, I appreciate you putting it on today's, tonight's agenda and getting the, getting the clock ticking to get this process going. Thank you.
And in discussions, too, with the, along with the EDA Board, Tara has indicated that even though, even if for some reason we don't have somebody here in that position because of timelines and whatnot, that they'd still be willing to work with us past November 1st. So we would still have coverage even if we didn't have an identifiable person just yet, so we'd still have assistance. Okay? Anybody have anything else?
So, we need to make a motion or to direct, for an RFP, for a contract individual for the EDA position with a closing date of, that'd be the next step in this?
Yeah, to advertise it, yep.
I'd make the motion to advertise a request for proposal for the EDA contract position for the hour work week, close it by 15 October.
Second.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, next is 9H, a request to close meeting for AFSMI, and I think that's what, if it's all right with everybody, that we do, there were some questions that we had at the last, at the last closed session, at our last regular meeting about some, some issues, and then we're gonna get those addressed, and we need to do that in a closed meeting. Okay?
Can I ask you a question about the EDA position? Will you guys be, like, interviewing, or are you going to interview people during that month? I know I've had a couple of calls of people wondering, I've actually had some resumes sent to me that I can forward on, but a month just seems like a really long time to just have it open unless you're going to kinda interview candidates during that time.
Well, if, my thought is if we have it open to not interview candidates at the time, because that, that may seem odd. I mean, I, 'cause, I don't know, what's, if you, if there's already been interest, if everybody's all right with it, maybe we'll just have it for two weeks.
Well, then you'd have to, I'd amend my motion, make it the 1st of September, then, or 1st of October, then, because I'd give you the two weeks' time to advertise and then collect the information.
Well, I don't, we do it September 29th, because that's a Friday.
But if you think about it, if you start now, you put it in the paper, it won't go in the paper until, like-
That's why I said it was-
No, today's Monday, so we can get it in the paper tomorrow for Wednesday.
The RFP isn't created, I can't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I mean, I would have to come up with the RFP, have, you know, the RFP drafted before then, that is- It's three weeks.
That's why I'm telling you the 29th of September.
Would it, how, how long would it take, do you think?
I can start working on it right away tomorrow, I will call the, I've already put a thing out to the league a couple of weeks ago when we talked about it at the EDA meeting, with no response of somebody having an RFP for something out there. The last RFP that we had was our auditing firm, I would have to get the rest of the information from what you want on there. The other thing I think that we should do here, let's see, I'm trying to find it here, request a determination from the Department of Revenue, whether the position would be an employee position or an independent contractor position, dependent on the duties that you come up with. That would have to be considered.
Well, we, well, I think we discussed that we'd want it as an independent contractor.
Yeah, I agree with you, but remember, I told you that there's specific things-
We have to find specific things, then? So, the way it's described?
There is, yeah, and, and to request a determination, if an employer, employee wanting to, workers' classification determination, you have to file a form with the Department of Revenue. Otherwise, you can, you know, as long as you stay away from some of these issues, then you don't have to do it.
What, what are-
What are some of them?
Are you part of it, are you gonna process?
It's based on three different things, Tony. One is the behavioral control, one is the financial control, and one is the relationship to the parties. I'll, I'll give you a copy of this.
No, but doesn't that, if we use our current contract with MAC, wouldn't that keep us-
Yeah, I think that would-
Use that part of the RFP, along with our-
Yeah, if that's, if that's what you want to do, yes.
Yeah, I think that, that would be, we've got that hammered out or corrected enough that-
And we did get a subcommittee together that went over-
Yep, the duties.
-different duties, is what we did, so all of that meeting wasn't in vain, like, it really-
No.
I think hashed out some good things. My suggestion or thoughts would be, you know, who does, if it's, if you hire an independent contractor, who is their boss, or who are they checking in with each day? Is it the EDA Board? Is it the city council? Is it the city administrator? Is it the mayor? Like, just making sure that everything is very clear when that person is brought on.
No, I understand that. So I, I think then, if, as long as the language is okay, based on what you're talking about with Madonna, for whatever we propose, we just gotta make sure it's okay with what you're citing.
Okay, so what you, what I'm understanding from you is that you want to use the current contract as the language of the RFP.
Yeah, you can clone whatever we need out of that.
Correct.
Clone some of the, the job description out of that into the RFP.
Yep, okay, so-
I can send you what Marshall advertised to, if that's helpful.
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, if, I don't know, what did we say, October 1st, or September 29th?
I would go the 29th, because that's the last Friday.
Yeah, no.
September, October 1st is a Sunday, so.
If you would, do you want to amend it, Tony, to have it open until 4:30 on September 29th?
Two weeks is enough time?
That's three.
Well, it's not, by the time you get it in that paper?
It's in the paper next week, we got two-
We'll be fine.
People are looking for it, yeah. They'll be on it.
You amended the motion, I'll second it again, then.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Anything else? Tara, Danny, was that, is that clear?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, we got the ASME deal, and then Terry got an EDA update?
Yeah, Fun One.
They're all fun.
Yeah, I know, Steve, he's joined in on the Fun the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, it's a riot.
Anyways, I'll wait with the Fifth Street stuff, since that's later. So, the update tonight, I, I didn't have anything formally prepared for packets, because we're working on a number of moving pieces, as Steve can probably attest to, but I felt like that I couldn't cover what I want to talk about tonight adequately in a, in a department head update, because I feel like there's a lot. Here for the Red Rooster property, so, I've been pretty quiet until now, because I haven't been able to say a lot publicly, due to the nature of the job. However, I would like to talk about a few things tonight, and, so we can kinda get our minds started thinking about how the future will go for that site. First, I'll just dispel the rumor, it's not QuickTrip, so, if you hear that rumor around town, it's, it's not QuickTrip. We have, we have contacted a number of potential businesses, different, you know, whether it's convenience stores or otherwise, we've contacted many, many people, writing, phone conversations, personal site visits, over the last year. There's been a lot of speculation as far as who's bought the building, since it's pending, since the sign was moved and taken down. What I can say is that the site's being purchased by a private developer in hopes to prepare the site for redevelopment. I know collectively, we would all like to see the site redeveloped, because right now it's vacant, people drive by it, and the weeds are getting tall, and it's, you know, it's an eyesore, and that's what people see, one of the first things people see when they, when they drive through Tracy. Redevelopment would provide many benefits, as, you know, as we know, would create jobs, build, or, you know, increase the tax base, and, and likely would provide services or products that the citizens of Tracy would need. All of the companies that we have been in contact with, or I should say, most of them have expressed concerns as to the time and expense of preparing the site, knowing that the site preparation would dilute capital and efforts that could be devoted to other sites. We can talk about Lewis Drug in a little bit here, but that's just one example. A benefit of the site is the Highway 14 location with high annual average daily traffic counts. There, there are over 3,000 on the stretch on the west side of the highway, up to 3,200 in some spots. As you go east out of town, there are roughly like 2,000 a day, so really, that, that stretch there between, you know, Dollar General, Casey's, Subway, you know, right in there sees the highest amount of traffic, you know, school and all of that. So, when we ever talk to site developers, they're always interested on the west side of town, no matter what. I've been in a couple meetings where they literally draw a line in the middle of Tracy and say, "We want to be on the west side," and those are a couple of the reasons why. Redeveloping the site would help keep some of the momentum going that started with the Dollar Stores, and continued with the Masonic Building, and Lewis Drug, and a couple of other things that we have in the hopper right now, so it's kinda like, keep the ball rolling. One of the benefits of the site also is that it already has the utilities needed, so if virgin land was, you know, selected on the east side or west side of town, the city would likely have to then extend infrastructure, potentially, you know, annex land into the city, and then, then all the timelines that go with that, sometimes turns developers off, because they could go to, you know, a neighboring town or a different location, and then, you know, select that site, because they could be up and running in a couple of months, whereas, you know, the timeline is tough for an actual redevelopment versus virgin land. So, talking about Lewis Drug, you know, a little bit of why they picked that site, because they looked at a number of sites, it's no secret, that land didn't need much work, and the biggest thing was the timeline. So from the time they entered purchase agreement to the time they closed on the property was a matter of weeks, there wasn't contingencies. And then, from the time they started construction to the time they'll be down is just a couple of months. So, literally, when they bought the site in July, and they're probably looking at, depending, you know, on weather, they're gonna be up and running November, or, you know, somewhere later this fall, early winter. Somebody were to do that on the Red Rooster site, it would likely be a year or longer, for a number of reasons. Environmental fears that accompany this site, tank removal, working with the MPCA, soil borings, Shane, you can probably talk about that a little bit more. We did find out just today that there is asbestos in the building, and the estimate is about $10,000 to clear up that asbestos, so that's another added expense to anybody who is going to invest in the site, or wants to see it be redeveloped. Not to mention that the building has significant water damage, the roof has been leaking, I was in it two weeks ago, and it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be hard for somebody to justify putting in a lot of money to fix up that building, when they could take that money and put it into something new that fits their needs. So, so I'm not saying it's gonna be torn down, but, but with the developers that I have talked to, I'm saying it's probably likely, and then that's another added cost on that site. So I'm, I'm just here to kinda throw, I know I'm throwing a lot at you guys, maybe some of you thought of it, maybe you haven't, but we have a huge opportunity in front of us to get this site redeveloped, so we're not driving by it every single day and saying, "God, I wish somebody would do something." There's a lot of reasons why it's been a struggle to have somebody pull the trigger on that site. Let's see, so then, going into the public-private partnership, actually, in the economic development world, if you ever go to, you know, training and stuff, they call it a P3, Public-Privet Partnership, and they really stress that in order to get things done, and people for work, to work together, the, the public entity, whether city or EDA, really has to partner and work together with private partnership to get things done, because on a site redevelopment with the scope as this, it can't just rest on the shoulders of a private developer, otherwise it's not gonna get done the way that it should. So redevelopment would likely not happen without the public support. So there, there are a couple things that I would encourage the city council or appropriate subcommittees to discuss in greater detail. One of them would be to do some research on, on tax increment financing, or tax abatement incentives, and then knowing what the five, 10, and 20-year, you know, ramifications are of each of those economic development tools. And then, looking at, you know, the map, how does, how does redeveloping Highway 14 fit in with a master plan? Because if you look at TIF, you can set up a district that would help redevelop the Red Rooster site, but then also some of the underutilized sites on Highway 14, because if you, you know, drive, there's, you know, we could all pick out at least a handful of sites that are probably gonna need some sort of new life breathed into them in the next couple of years. And Highway 14 is one of our biggest assets, so I think, you know, you guys putting more money into flowers on 14 and stuff, like, as much as we might not want to admit it, 14's kind of the new downtown, in a way, so, working with that is important. To demonstrate a couple of the reasons or thought process behind this, the former Lau Seed Building, I looked it up today, it generated roughly $700 or $800 in tax revenue, and now that the site is redeveloped in Family Dollar, Family Dollar pays over $17,000 in taxes per year, and $11,000 of that goes to the city, so, I mean, that's just one example. Dollar General's another one. When that site was classified as ag land, the city of Tracy got $27 for that site each year. Now, over $12,000, almost $13,000 goes to the city of Tracy each year on a redevelopment, so if, if abatement is used, or TIF, to try to lessen the burden of a private developer on the front end, the city is going to see those benefits and reap those benefits, jobs, tax base, all of that stuff that we talk about. And I guess when I found out that, that Lau Seed Building was, you know, $700 or $800 in tax revenue, and now it's over $17,000, it's like, wow, you know, we, we have a huge opportunity here on 14. Not that that's news to any of you guys, but it is pretty cool.
Well, it's nice to hear the numbers, though.
Yeah.
So we're reminded of what benefit it is.
Absolutely. So, I guess with that, it's just looking at the long-term vision, reiterating the fact that a public-private partnership is needed, and, so although I'm not here with the formal request right now, I'm bringing it, because I know that in the near future, there likely will be a formal request made by a developer, so I just wanted to start the conversations now, so we're ready when they're here. What that might look like is a potentially a development agreement, which is a legally binding contract, signed by both parties, both the city and the private developer, and what it basically says is, "If you do X, we will do Y." So if you abate the taxes, we will build a, you know, whatever, $100,000 facility. And it lays out all of that in detail, so everybody knows what to expect, instead of just some willy-nilly thing. It just sets the stage, clarifies the rules, and all of that. So again, if we can just be ready when that request is made, or, or have the background information to ask some of the questions, at least you guys can think about it now. Many times, an individual from outside the community who is experienced in these situations, you know, I know, on the surface, I know what a TIF, how it works, but for all of the ins and outs and stuff, that's why we have people like Todd Hagan, who can, who can, you know, provide us some projections or financial advice in that regard. Also, I've worked with, and I know the city council has worked with Shannon Sweeney in the past, and he does an excellent job, but that might be worth further consideration, too, if they come in, and, and I know there's a couple of new council members, and maybe nobody's been a part of TIF, but maybe starting to get educated on some of how that works. I know I'm still learning, it's, it's an ongoing process, but that's just my two cents on the Red Rooster and a little bit on Highway 14. Just wanted to bring that here, and then I'll turn it back to you guys if you have any questions or comments.
Sure. Anybody have any questions for Tara? I appreciate the update. I mean, I, I do think it's clear that we all have to work together to, you know, as you said, that 14's the new downtown, I mean, that's not surprising, because it's where it gets the most traffic, and we have to do what we can to improve it.
Mm-hmm. And it seems like hard work, or whatever, for environmental, and, you know, tanks, and asbestos, and demolition, and all of that, but, but I think we should just look at it as, we have an opportunity to really do something with that site, that everybody's gonna see when they come to Tracy, so, it doesn't matter who or what is, is built there, but it's gonna be something new, or something that offers services or products to, to the citizens instead of being an empty site, so.
And then, as the example you gave with Family Dollar and Dollar General, the tax revenue that it brings in?
Yeah.
It's significant.
Yeah.
So, anybody have any questions? Appreciate the update, thank you for letting us know what's up. Now to Fifth Street.
Okay. Are you gonna, J and K, or, no? No?
You want to do that here while you're up here?
Yep, sure. So, passed out a quick memo on Fifth Street. Tony and Steve, I know you've been involved with some of the background on this, as far as, we have an offer on the Fifth Street Townhomes, which, hallelujah, we would like to move forward with this. We have moved, moved forward with a contingency, which is why I'm here tonight. A year and a half ago, I think it's been already, the EDA and the city council worked together to pass a resolution to offer tax abatement incentives to a buyer at Fifth Street. It was a five-year abatement of the city portion of taxes sliding scale. With that, we were able to advertise that there was a tax abatement involved, so any future owner could come in and, you know, raise rent by five bucks a year, 10 bucks a year, whatever they needed to do to help make some of the capital improvements that are needed on the properties, or that will be needed in the next couple of years, et cetera. What, what the EDA is doing- What the EDA is doing now is working with the buyer who has offered us, or counter-offered, or whatever, we're negotiating, and they want a five-year abatement of 100% of the city taxes instead of the five-year sliding. So, it's not a huge difference, I don't have the calculation of overall, but we have the price and all other terms agreed upon, this is just the last piece to help us secure the sale of the Fifth Street Town Homes. And we can't go back and amend the resolution that was passed in 2016 because there's a two-year window on each parcel. So what we can do is, we can look at this memorandum of understanding, which has that resolution, the purchase agreement, and a new resolution drafted as adens to this memorandum of understanding, outlining what our intent is as the EDA and the city council for the buyer. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions. It was drafted, we got it done today, otherwise, it would have been in the packet sooner, but...
Well, I have two questions.
Yeah.
One, how much was the sale price?
It is in there.
Well, one says 265, and then one says...
Then the addendum changes it. On the addendum, it goes back to 277.5, which basically crosses off the front price. The addendum changes the price.
So is it 277 or 265?
277.5.
And you don't know what the taxes be on that property?
Roughly six, something, I have the calculation in my office, I got estimates from the Lyon County Assessor's Office.
Six thousand?
Total. So the city portion is a little less than that, yeah, roughly seven.
So we're abating the city portion, or the...
Correct.
We only can abate the city portion.
Yep, just the city portion. The school district would continue to receive their share, the county would continue to receive their share. Right now, the city is not generating any taxes from this property, so basically, we're just delaying when the property would go on the tax rolls, because the EDA is exempt from paying taxes. We pay a payment in lieu of taxes, which is a payment to the county instead of actual private taxes, basically. The other thing that it is good is that then we take, so the EDA built them with a good intent, to fill a void that Tracy needed, you know, it was a great project, but now it's time to turn it back to a private owner, that, so we're not competing with private landlords for rent, we're not spending our time, you know, managing them, which, you know, that, and upkeep, and this and that, so if we can pay off our debts on it and not have to worry about it, it's kind of ideal. We've been...
The thing is, selling it at that 275, 277.5 covers the debt that's on that property, that property hasn't been cash flowing the best, it's been subsidized by the O'Brien Court. So it gets the debt taken care of, and it will put it back on the tax rolls, albeit five years down the road.
Five years down the road, as we're getting nothing now, so eventually, we're getting money off of it.
There'll be money ahead.
And I think they were listed before I even started here, so they've been, I've been here almost two years, so they've been listed, I want to say, at least three, or somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay.
The new resolution as Exhibit C is basically ready, so when, in May, there's a timeline where we can't amend or update the old resolution, but we can, in May, this resolution is drafted with a May date, basically, the memorandum of understanding is the agreement that we can't enter, we can't do a new resolution right now, but for tax reasons, it's advantageous for us as the EDA and also for the buyers to close this year versus the next year. So that's why the MOU is being done instead of a resolution at this time, per our city attorney. You know, it's kind of confusing, but...
Do we have a motion then to allow us then to execute these documents that we need to, to facilitate the sale of the property on Fifth Street?
I would make that motion.
One second.
Motion made in second, any other discussion?
Is there any necessity for a public hearing on sale and stuff?
No, I do not believe so.
I'm not, I don't think so, no.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Tara, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks for the update.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next, 9K, Proposed Ordinance to Address Sump Pump Regulations, and we have that in our packet. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
The planning commission reviewed this, yeah, the planning, not this one?
Well, they reviewed it, just not the ordinance, because Matt drew after it.
Okay, Matt drew after the ordinance, they reviewed, yeah, they reviewed the, you had asked, I think Bill had asked at one of the last meetings to have it reviewed, to change the ordinance to have the sump pump be a requirement of anything that, how do you say, Shane, when the...
The intercept line.
The intercept line is provided.
Right. No, I had asked if we as a city should consider putting that in and charging it to the owners so we know that it's done, when we put street projects...
This is a way where we can...
Gives us the ability to do it.
Gives us the ability to do it.
Gives us the ability to do it.
Force them to do it, and then they pay.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, and I'm fine with that, as long as we got a way to, as long as we have a way to enforce it, and that we do enforce it, that was the main issue.
Any other questions? Okay.
That's going to require a call for a public hearing.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to waive the first reading and have a public hearing on the 25th at 6:50.
50. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, 11A. Yeah, that is done. Resolution setting a public hearing for vacating a portion of Sixth Street East, already took care of that. We got the consent calendar, we got the municipal accounts payable, planning commission minutes from August 7, 2017, multipurpose center minutes from June and July, and relief association minutes from August. Any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
Motion approved.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business, we got the fall cleanup update, and the date we have for that is...
September 30.
September 30. Anything additional other than that?
No, we did everything exact same as we did the advertising, and the only difference I know of is the contractor for the garbage Southwest sanitation was available.
And Councilman Teague is positive it's going to rain, so hopefully, he's proven wrong. Okay, next is new business, we got the 2018 budget, and we have some items on our desk.
Saturday, I had sent everything out via email to you, and that's what Diane included in front of you on the budget. The overview, originally, when I started, Steve, I talked to you last week, I said that how I started to figure it is that I just took last year's levy and added 4% to it, and then went off of that. As I started balancing everything, a couple of things were brought a little bit more clear to my attention. One is that we refunded the 2008 bond in 2016, and that makes the payments that we have to levy for an increase of $45,383, which is a 60.51% increase in that. The other thing was the infrastructure reserve for the storm sewer levy that we talked about is a $53,760 that needs to be added to the levy. And the final thing was, the permanent improvement is, in 2016, when we did the temporary bonding, Todd Hagan told us that we would be having a $40,000 payment that would have to be made, and that was figured or not calculated, anything, how we were going to come up with the money to pay for that. So I put that into the permanent improvement, which increases the permanent improvement from 10, which is a $40,000 increase, or a $400,000 increase for that. Keep in mind that next council meeting, you will have to certify, we have to certify the levy to the county by the 30th of September. Once we certify that, we can decrease it, but we can't increase it after it's certified. This budget that I propose is showing a 10.9% increase, which is more than I wanted to see, and I'm sure it's more than you want to see, so I would suggest that we visit to see what kind of cuts you want to make in the budget. A lot of the cuts can't, I mean, you can see that I've already cut the general fund down by 3.9% or $28,752. You can make cuts to the other things, but keep in mind, that's, I mean, that's a big part of where the revenue comes from, too, so that's your debt service, that's how I started it, is that the debt service has to come in first before, you know, the general I will entertain any questions that you have, I don't know if you want me to go through line item by line item like I did before, I think we probably could do that on a special session.
Yeah, what I'm thinking of is logistically, prior to the next council, I mean, we need, I think we need to have another working session to go through this, and just spend that working session exclusively on the budget, and going through it. So my suggestion would be that we do that sometime next week, if people are available, and I don't want to set something up or ask that it be set up when people aren't here, because even if one person's not available, I think it'd be good for all of us to be here.
I'm gone from the 20th through the 25th.
I won't be available on the 18th.
All right, so that, like, the 19th, does that work for you, Dave?
It should.
Tony?
Yep.
19th would work.
Okay. Let's, does 5:30?
Six would be better.
Oh, it's 6 o'clock.
Okay.
I want, it's showing up, let me just make sure that...
Hey, now, you gonna be here?
That's what I was going to say, it's a nice, Steve checking on everybody, are you gonna be here?
Madonna, these numbers, do they reflect...
No, I'm here.
The $11,000 for flowers, the $20,000 for...
I did not budget anything for the flowers.
Okay, so that's, those aren't even in here. What we talked about today is that, you know, the $1,000 for the...
Camera.
Cameras, that's not in here either.
All right, so let's, what I suggest is, is that we get our thoughts together, review everything, and then when we have the working session, it'll be September 19th at 6 o'clock, Tuesday, the 19th, at 6 o'clock here, that we go through everything and come up with something that's agreeable to everybody, so when we have the next council meeting, we could agree on, at least anyway, the ceiling of what we're looking at for the levy. Does that sound fair to everybody? So then, in the meantime, I mean, if there are questions you want to ask Madonna, you can certainly ask, but a lot of it could probably be answered, and we can work through all that when we get the working session. So, Tuesday, 19th, at 6 o'clock.
Thanks for the paper, Tom.
Okay, next is 15 Mayor and Council Communications, anybody have anything to do?
Just a couple of things, were we planning on having a closed meeting for council review and all that, at our next meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, I forgot about that.
And then, if we could get that form, I know you sent it once already, Madonna, but...
Oh, sure.
The review form, could you resend that out to us? And then, I forgot earlier to ask, but Shane, are we spraying for mosquitoes at all?
I'd like to bring that up right now. Right now, we're planning on, as long as the weather is fine, which it seems to be, unless the wind's going to be up, we're going to be going around tomorrow night.
Okay, good, because all of a sudden, for some reason, they're out in full force, so...
Yeah, it's kind of, if I would have known it was going to be that bad over Labor Day weekend, we've done it a couple of weeks ago, but, I mean, there's usually not a problem this time of the year, but...
I've just, I've had a lot of people ask that, so I forgot to ask it earlier, so you've got that on your agenda?
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Thank you. That's all I had. Oh, so for next, the 20th?
Yeah, so I forgot to mention that, the next meeting then, on the 25th, we're going to a closed session and do the review for the city administrator, their forms will be sent out to us, we fill out the forms, the evaluation forms, we have them, we use that to go off with discussions with Madonna, and then Madonna could discuss with us things that, how we can improve on working together and all those things, so that'd be taking place then at the end of the regular meeting on the 25th in the closed session.
I would just like to say thank you to our law enforcement, fire, first responders of all types, the Andy and the Streep, for the work that they did over the Labor Day weekend, nothing but compliments, really appreciate the work, it's a lot of extra effort on all three of those groups, public works, too, I'm sorry. Shane, you guys, you start a week ahead of time, you get caught up a week after it's over with, so, thanks again for all the work, we had a successful weekend.
Yep. Excellent. Anything else? We have a motion then to go into closed session.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting closed.